Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, then click on View Agenda.
If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our prayer this morning comes from Romans 12:16, and it says, "Live in harmony with each other; don't try to act important, but enjoy the company of ordinary people, and don't think that you know it all." There's a good reading for us all, okay. And our dog warden has our dog this morning.
Today we have a Pug Beagle mix that transposes into a Puggle. Cage 20, available for adoption on the 27th. Female, about five years old. Seems to have pretty good temperament. We have 25 other dogs in the kennel, so come on down and take a look.
Today we have two appointments. The first one's going to be the Big Brothers Big Sisters mentoring program, Leece Day.
If you'd just come up to the podium, yeah, the right or the left. Leece Day, the CEO with Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Talk about the mentoring program.
Yes, good morning. Good to see you. I brought a couple of folks with me today. I brought David Jerome, he's our Senior Case Manager, so folks can understand the type of support you get as a big brother or big sister, and our Big Sister Year show, Rebar. But we are here today and we want to thank you for allowing us to come in and to spread the good news about Big Brothers Big Sisters' life-changing work. We are looking for more mentors, and so we will be here this morning if any county employees would like to find out a little bit more. Big Brothers Big Sisters is something people seem to think that they know a little bit about, but then they also have some concerns and questions. And the best way to get those answered is just to ask, just to ask us. So we want to be present today for anybody here, as well as any of the employees. We'll be downstairs with an information table. So what we do is one-to-one mentoring. And how that makes a difference, and if you just think about in your own life, and I see Evan here, Evan Goodnow is one of our Big Brothers as well, his little's in 8th grade this year. If you think about your own friends and your own, when you're together in a group, it's a different dynamic than when you're one-to-one. Like if you've got something going on and you're out with a bunch of friends, that's a lot of fun, right? But it's a little bit different when you're one-to-one, you can really just go a little deeper. And one of our former littles is in his twenties now, and he told me that the difference was, you know, like when he went with like a fishing program, he spent most of his time trying not to fall in the pond, right? Just a bunch of kids and they're trying to, you know, hey, this is a really efficient way to teach everybody to fish. We'll just put them all together and we'll just say, hey, this is how you fish. But it really, it's really different when he went with his big brother, because his big brother, he actually like put the worm on the hook. He actually like learned how to do it. He actually did every step. And so it's very intensive to have a volunteer for every child, and as you can well imagine, we have some children who are still ready to be matched, that we're looking for some, actively looking for some volunteers to pair up. On the volunteer side, the volunteers tell us they don't know why they didn't do it sooner, that the things that they were worried about either didn't happen, or that with the professional level of staff that we have, that they were anticipated, planned for, managed. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Cheryl.
Good morning.
Good morning Cheryl.
Hi, as she said, I'm Cheryl Rebar, and I've been a big sister to Molly since October 2010. She was six years old when we were matched, and now she just turned 12. So wow, a lot of growth has taken place for almost six years. My husband Joe was the driving force that encouraged me to become a big sister. He is very supportive of our match. Molly loves him and looks up to him, perhaps because he is the father figure that she's never had. Over the years, Molly and I have built a strong relationship based mainly on trust, respect, and good communication. I pick her up usually every other week and we spend three to four hours together. We enjoy such things as shopping, visiting the metro parks, baking, playing cards and we, and bowling, and she loves to go out to dinner. Being a big is a responsibility that is a very rewarding job to me. As bigs, we want to teach them, guide them, give help to them, and advise them. We want to show them another way of living instead of believing that the life that they are growing up in, such as poverty, low achievement, drugs and alcohol use, and incarceration, is all that there is. Here's where Big Brothers and Big Sisters fit in. Studies show that our positive influence in their lives lessens the chances of them using drugs and alcohol. They're more likely to stay in school and get good grades, and they are less likely to become violent individuals and a menace to our society. I am very proud to say that Molly is doing very well in school, and recently told me that she had a really good report card. Molly and I have a goal in our match, and that is for her to graduate from high school and go on to college. She would be the first to achieve this in her family. I tell her to be proud, be different, and be great. Our relationship has faced some challenges over the years, but we work them out, and that's what makes our match stronger, and it strengthens our connection. One of the goals of Big Brothers Big Sisters is to foster a long-term mutually rewarding experience for both you and your little. Molly and I are meeting that goal. Thank you.
All right Cheryl.
Good morning. I am David Jerome, I am the Senior Case Manager at Big Brothers Big Sisters. You're always a tough act to follow, I was hoping I was going before you Cheryl, but I've been with the agency eight years, and I just want to real quick touch on the different programs we have and how Big Brothers Big Sisters plays a role in these mentoring relationships. We have three main programs that we have. We have our community-based program, which is our traditional program that most people recognize us for, that's one Cheryl just described. That's one where the volunteer will go into the home, pick the child up, and they spend that one-to-one time out in the community together. As Cheryl pointed out, the activities are very low-cost, no-cost, and simple. We live in a wonderful area where we have a very strong library system and metro park system, and it doesn't take a lot of money to do this. So that's one of the concerns people have, is, you know, I don't have a lot of money, but I have the time. All you need is the time. Speaking of the time, you don't need a lot of time. Some of our matches get together once or twice a month. That is, the once a month is the minimum commitment. Longest, strongest matches get together about twice a month, and they can get together about four times maximum a month. We also have a school-based program. It's an after-school mentoring program. We have nine sites throughout the county. It's primarily high school students that mentor elementary school students. We're in Lorraine, Aliria, Amherst, Avon, Avon Lake, Sheffield, and we're looking to expand that program. I run two sites myself, and I think it's really cool because high school students tend to get a bad rep, that they don't, they don't care about anything, and they only care about themselves. And I'll tell you, from September through May, we have almost 100 high school students that give up an hour and a half of their time to mentor children, help them with homework, we play educational board games together, go outside and play if it's nice out. And then lastly, we have a Lunch Buddy program, which we're trying to expand this one as well, and some people don't even know we do this, but it's also one-to-one mentoring, but the adult mentor goes into the child's school for a half hour once a week and does same types of things. Obviously, you're limited because you're in a school building, but read a book together, help them with homework, just talk to them, just listen to them. You don't have to be an expert, you know, we're there to coach you, we're there to support you. We take the child's needs, we look at the child's needs, and then we find a volunteer that might have those strengths and match based by that. I think we pride ourselves, because actually here in Lorraine County, we have one of the longest match longevities in the nation. So our matches tend to last a little bit longer than the average, and I think that's because of the time and effort that we put into it. And the longevity of staff too. Lisa's been with us since day one. We opened over 20 years ago in April of 96, and she was there since day one. So we have some staff longevity too, which is kind of cool. So we're here to, you know, just educate you guys, answer any questions you might have, and of course recruit. Since the doors opened, we've made over 2,000 matches, but we still have 75 kids on our Ready-To-Be Match list. So we really want to do everything we can to give everyone an opportunity to just have that caring adult in their life, just someone to listen to, look up to. There are some things you don't always feel comfortable going to mom or dad or grandma about, and sometimes you just feel comfortable having that other person and friend to look up to and bounce ideas off of and get help from. So thank you for the opportunity, and hopefully I'll see some of you guys later. We're here till 1 o'clock, so thank you.
You guys have a great program. What's the youngest and the oldest age group?
So we started six. We start at the age of six, and we recruit up until 14, but they can stay in the program until they're 18. A lot of the mentors too, obviously we do high school mentors, they start at 14, but for a community-based program like Cheryl does, they start at 18. We have a very extensive screening process. We do FBI, BCI background checks on all of our volunteers. We do three personal reference checks. We do sex offender registry check, and we also spend two hours with them, orienting them, interviewing them, because we want to make the safest match possible. If we don't feel comfortable, if there's just something in our gut that's saying, you know what, I don't think this is necessarily the right volunteer experience for this particular individual, you know, unfortunately, we just don't accept them. If we don't let our own kids hang out with them, why would we let someone else's? So safety is key, not only for the children, but the volunteers as well, so.
Yeah, I think the Lunch Buddy program probably works out pretty well for a lot of, you know, working professionals. Maybe they have a family at home, so after work they go to their family, but at least during the day, they could, once a week, be a Lunch Buddy.
You're absolutely right, and that's why it's appealing to a lot of people, because this is still a volunteer experience, and they have their own families and they have their own jobs. And a lot of times too, if their employer finds out that they're doing such a program, they love it, and they'll work with the employee, and it only takes a half an hour. Some people get an hour or more for lunch. So we try to match them with a child at a school that is in proximity to their workplace location too, so that's also a great point.
Wonderful program, guys. Lisa, you're on a great ship.
Yep. Good job, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up this morning, we have the winners of the coloring contest for keep-
It's calendar contests, sorry.
Calendar contests.
The kids color.
Okay. The calendar contest winners for Keep Lorraine County Beautiful, Brandy Schnell, and going to be joined by Commissioner Kokoski.
Yes, I would like to thank you for having me today. I'm Brandy Schnell, the Community Outreach Coordinator for Lorraine County Solid Waste. Every year we hold a calendar contest, which is open to students in grades 1 through 12 in all of the Lorraine County public and private schools.
We may need you to wait just a minute, we're having an audio problem.
I was gonna, yeah, I'll talk, and then I'll do the PowerPoint after we present them with their certificates of the ones that are here.
Okay.
Okay. So as always, the talent this year was amazing. Commissioner Kokoski and I judged these entries. We had a very hard time narrowing it down, but we did ultimately come up with 13 winners who will be the months of the calendar as well as the cover. We had over 1,000 entries from 29 different schools in Lorraine County. Our winners are going to receive a gift card, which was donated by GT Environmental, a certificate of appreciation, and when the calendars are printed, they will receive calendars to pass out to their families. $25 Visa gift card that was donated by GT Environmental. And then in November, we're going to have a display of this artwork at the Carlisle Visitor Center at the Lorraine County Metro Parks for America Recycles Day, and then they will be given those drawings at the, when they're taken down. So we have some of our winners here today. So the first winner that I would like to have come up is Emilio Solis, 1st grader from St. Joseph's School in Amherst. I'm gonna turn and take a picture with the Commissioner.
Show your certificate.
Congratulations.
Yeah, good, I'm glad. Nice job.
Good job, alright.
Next, we would like to welcome Lillian Parker, 4th grader from Windsor Elementary. This is actually her second year in a row for winning. Congratulations. Thank you. Next, we have Kristen DeWitt, 7th grader from South Amherst Middle School. We, the printer, we haven't had them, we haven't gotten the printer yet. I'm sorry, I will show them though, they are going to be seen. Congratulations. Next, we have Joe Butcher, 8th grader from First Baptist Christian School here in Aliria. And we have Rachel Lebus, a 12th grader from Lorraine High School and brand-new graduate. She graduated last night. Just quickly, I want to make sure that no calendar contest winners came that I was not aware of that they were coming. Did I miss anybody? Okay, good. I believe so. Okay, for this minute, okay, I will be calling you back down. Okay, so now we are going to do the PowerPoint, if we could help me out here, and we will show the calendar contest winners.
We didn't figure, you don't have anything loaded, that's what I was asking.
Oh, it should be on there. It was on there on my computer, so I don't know, is it not gonna work then?
It's not loaded.
Okay, it was, hmm, I don't know. Okay, it was on there when I, on my computer this morning, so I don't know what happened, but, alright, well, then maybe we'll have to, we'll get them put on the website for sure.
Do you have a jump drive?
Yeah, it's right here.
Is your computer plugged into the other one?
Um, what do you, what do you-
Is Ernie here? Nope.
Well, I don't, I don't know, and I don't want to mess anything up, so.
Okay, do we want to get tech support?
Well, I don't know if we can get it on here at the time.
Okay, well, I'll move on to the other that I have. The Keep Lorraine County Beautiful Advisory Board has asked some students at the Lorraine County JVS to come up with some designs for our very first logo. Teachers Tina Crossy, who is the Web and Graphic Design Instructor, and Katie Street, who is the Marketing and Management Instructor. We're excited to have this opportunity to have their students work together to come up with some designs to present to the Keep Lorraine County Beautiful Advisory Board. The students were able to talk to the board members directly at their April 21st meeting about their designs, and we offered some suggestions, and they made some changes, and we were able to take the 20 designs that we were presented with down to eight, and then down to just the three designs. So we do have students here today that created those three designs. Ultimately, even though it was difficult because they were all so good, the board voted and decided on one of those logos that we are able to have here today. I did print it out in case we had technical difficulties. So first, if Commissioner Kokoski could come back down, I'm going to have her give the certificates of appreciation to our runner-up design winners. So if Hunter Weinbrandt and Pruitt Young from the Lorraine County JVS would come on up, they will get their certificates of appreciation. The other runner-up design was created by Kristen Molestke and Ethan Rink. If you would come on up and receive your certificates. And finally, we had, the logo that was the winning design was designed by Zachary Grissom, Ryan Jones, and Colin Lehman. However, only Zachary, is that correct? Is here today, so if I could have Zachary come on up and receive his certificate, and as an extra surprise, which they were not expecting, the winners are going to receive a $25 Master Gift Card donated by GT Environmental. So come on up, Zachary.
For our program, they, they all like by Academy, so they all have to wear red.
And I wanted to just recognize the teachers that helped us. Thank you, Commissioner. That's Tina Crossy and Katie Street, thank you so much for allowing your students to help us and do this work for us, so big round of applause for them as well.
Hey Brandy, Ernie's here, if you'd like to try to have that set up at some point.
Okay, so do we want to do that now, or do we want to-
No, you can finish up.
Okay, well, I'm done with that part, so.
You're done with that, okay. He'll assist you.
Okay. Thanks, Ernie. Okay, here we go. This is the calendar contest winners. This will be our 2017 calendar cover by Rachel Lebus, 12th grader, well newly graduated from Lorraine High School. January, Marissa Slack, 2nd grader from Liberty Elementary in North Ridgeville. February, Autumn Zakel, 8th grader, South Amherst Middle School. March, Olivia Ward, 3rd grader from Liberty Elementary in North Ridgeville. April, Allison Unack, 5th grader from St. Peter's School in North Ridgeville. May, Kristen DeWitt, 7th grader, South Amherst Middle School. June, Erin Boland, 6th grader, Troy Intermediate School, that's in Avon Lake. July, Beth Ziegelmeyer, 10th grader, Aliria Catholic High School, and she actually won two years ago as an 8th grader at St. Jude's School. We don't look at the names when we're judging, so whenever they come up and we get to finally look at the names, we're always surprised when we have a repeat winner. August, Lillian Parker, 4th grader from Windsor Elementary. September, Emilio Solis, 1st grader, St. Joseph's School in Amherst. October, Joe Butcher, 8th grader from First Baptist Christian School in Aliria. November, Eilina Gonzalez, 11th grader, Lorraine High School. December, Brianna Bonamolo, 7th grader, South Amherst Middle School. And then of course, we would just like to thank you for your support, and also thank GT Environmental for providing the gift cards, and Commissioner Kokoski for helping me to judge this very difficult-to-judge contest. I do have the pictures here of the logos also now that we have this. There's the winning logo, the board members liked it with the puzzle piece, how it fit into the whole state of Ohio. So that, those are our designs, so thank you very much for having me.
Students all did a great job.
They did an awesome job.
It's very hard to judge because there's so many submissions with so much talent. Every once in a while, there'll be like a misspelled word or something that we can't accept it, even though the artwork is, you know, fabulous, but, so, yeah, kids do a great job and appreciate their efforts.
Yes, and the teachers for allowing them to do that, yes, thank you so much.
How many entries again?
We had 1,033 entries this year.
Wow, how in the world did you-
Well, she narrows it down, like I said, some of the misspelled words and things like that, or-
But we still go through quite a few, yeah. Every year, we've done that, so it's been great.
That's great, good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brandy.
Hey, we're gonna continue on with the board meeting, but I understand if you've got other family commitments or obligations you need to get to, you're more than welcome to leave at this time. You're also invited to stay if you'd like to. We don't want to push anybody out of the room, I just know people have other commitments and obligations. Thank you for joining us this morning. Congratulations to everyone.
I really liked the lighthouse one, but I didn't really get the green one. Oh, they didn't do that one?
No. It was just, the one that I gave you. It's a large one.
Yeah, I did keep it, remember I told you to take it? It was in my office.
I think I left it there.
It was the outline and it had cans on it or something, litter something.
Just had like grass.
Because the ten of Keep Lorraine County Beautiful was to use that logo on the T-shirts, mostly because they hadn't done it in time. I guess I went to my first meeting, didn't know I was chairing it. Yeah, I didn't know I was the chair.
They did?
Yeah, he's been there quite a bit.
Nobody wants to see our meetings.
Nobody cares about what we do here.
They're in civics class. They do all the handout coloring contest winners. Government at work.
Okay, we'll now resume our meeting.
Under resolutions, investments.
So moved.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
No advances, any repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Under the airport advertised for bits to rehabilitate the taxiways, notice- Under the airport advertised rebits to rehabilitate the taxiways, notice being in the paper on May 31st and June 6th, open at 2:00 PM on June 21st, mandatory pre-bid meeting at 10:00 AM on June 9th, and estimate cost of project is $953,674.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, Jim, is this the 5% match local match?
Yes.
Okay, so approximately, not quite $50,000. Evan was asking a question before and I didn't have the paperwork with me exactly.
Well, what happened here is we were cued for over 3 million and during the federal budget cycle, FTA wasn't funded as strongly as they anticipated, so they had to reduce back some of the projects. We had hoped to resurface and rehabilitate all of the taxiways around the main runway and unfortunately, we will only be able to do part of that this year. We're gonna work towards getting additional funding. The board had previously committed to matching 3 million because we just couldn't let that money go by, it was so little match with so much money. So I'll probably be reminding you again if we're successful for next year that we had already made that commitment. They're working hard for us in Detroit. We got a really good management team that works with us at the airport, but there's a lot of need and there's only a little bit of money. So at least we're gonna get some of the taxiways done this year and it is 5% match.
Okay, just want to confirm that.
Mr. Kayla, or Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions, as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Administrator Cordes.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have some potential new hires I wish to discuss with the board at Job and Family Services, possibly 911. I also want to update you on ongoing labor negotiations at the DD, Children's Services, and with all workers here. Also potential sale and purchase of real estate that we've been working on, so all three of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. I'd ask at the conclusion of regular board meeting, we go into executive session and we talk about those items that I've outlined. Thank you.
Approved one of the reading on the minutes of May 16th and 17th.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized payment of $1,000 to Borion Keel Home for funerals, Lorraine for indigent veteran Richard Allen Jordan, Amherst, in compliance with the Ohio Revised Code 5901.25.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Intern at MOU with statewide consortium of county law library resource boards and commissioners on behalf of Lorraine County Law Library, effective retroactive to April 26, 2016 through December 31, 2016, to award a grant in the amount of $449.99 to purchase an HP laser debt printer.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized an extension of revenue sharing agreement between the counties of Lake, Ashtria, Lorraine, and Cleveland-Cuyahoga County Port Authority for the Lake Area Energy Development Corporation. This is effective for five years and Cleveland-Cuyahoga Port Authority will receive 40%, where Ashtria, Lake, and Lorraine Counties will receive 20%.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, if I can just give a little bit on this, Lorraine County's been a member of, well, first the Great Lakes Wind Initiative which morphed into LEED Co. I've been fortunate enough to serve on the board since it began and again, it's multiple counties that have worked together to establish offshore wind in the Great Lakes, Lake Area in particular, be the first project that we've had up here that would be offshore. As we've all known, you know, the cost of oil goes up and down and hopefully, we can work towards getting this project moving forward. And this is the first revenue sharing agreement of its kind between counties. It's normally revenue sharing between municipalities and we're extending this for five more years. We have, we are working on an agreement with a Norwegian wind developer, Fred Olson Renewables, who's gonna take this project, hoping to get turbines in the water and functioning by the end of 2018. We did just receive $3.7 million from Department of Energy. When the feds first brought this out about four years ago, we weren't in the top three, we were fourth or fifth ranked, so we've been getting small amounts of money, 3 million, 4 million. We're now up to a little bit over $10.7 million in funding from the Department of Energy and a couple of the projects ahead of us have not done well so far, so it's looking we may have a shot to get into a portion of the 47 million that was awarded to offshore projects in the Atlantic that haven't gone forward, so this again, just takes us on another five years in agreement.
This is for the submerged land lease, right? For the, for what they believe the land leases are gonna be worth?
Correct, it's long-term, we're still working out how long the final term will be with Fred Olson, whether it's a 20-year term or a whole 50-year term of the land leases. Those will be discussed, Mike Challenger, our sustainability coordinator, actually represents me on the board, so we're working on it, so it's, you know, continue the regional cooperation, we're talking about multiple counties.
Yeah, it's a worthy initiative, I think it certainly will put Ohio and the region on the map and a lot of folks don't realize our strongest wind speeds are about three miles off of Avon Point and Avon Lake and so in our area, we literally have the strongest wind speeds out there. You know, it's something that's been a little frustrating when I was in Columbus because there was a lack of support, a general lack of support on renewable, on the renewable energy front and I think I've told the story about having the amendment about wanting one half of 1% by 2025 coming from offshore wind and was told I could stand on the floor till hell froze over and the amendment was never going to be accepted, let alone have the opportunity to speak about it. But it's definitely a worthy project and I just think that if we can get started with this and get a couple of the wind turbines out there in the lake, I think it'll definitely put us on the map and let the whole world know, quite frankly, that we're serious about renewable energy.
Well, a significant part of that, and they did, they destroyed our renewable portfolio standards because I don't know how many times I was supposed to testify and it always got pulled, but also, this is a jobs component.
Oh, big time.
The actual manufacturing, Lorraine County Community College back in 2010 or 11, Jim, did we work with them when they brought the Iowa Lakes Wind Turbine Technical Park to the college, I think it was in 10?
It was, it was a while back and then, remember, we were out at Colt Manufacturing when they, they do the gearboxes for wind turbines over in North Ridgeville. So, I mean, there's a lot of pieces and parts that could be good. I think one of the big problems they were having was the blades were so big, getting them transported around was a big problem.
Well, that was one of the concerns going in.
Yeah, remember, we were out there measuring and surveying and doing all of that, so it's been pretty exciting.
Yeah, I mean, so hopefully, this can move forward and we can actually, you know, it's all about job development, let's be honest, you can talk about all the other environmental reasons why it's such a good thing, but it comes down to jobs for our communities, so.
Well, it's job for the community, you know, recognizing now that energy has become less costly in the, for the short term.
Short term.
Everybody's turning their gaze elsewhere. The fracking's down, solar's down, wind turbines down. It's funny, they don't prepare for the day they're gonna need it, they try to prepare the day they need it. And, and so, just keeping it alive has probably been quite a chore over there.
We've been hanging on.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Issuance of not to exceed 2,285,000 Series 2016 Capital Improvement Plan improvements bond anticipation notes for purpose of paying the cost of construction, constructing and acquiring improvements to various county-owned properties, including HVAC improvements for roof repair and replacement, sidewalk, parking lot, storm sewer, landscape, security, and other site and building improvements, together with all necessary appetances thereto.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Issuance of not to exceed 2,570,000 Series 2016 Sanitary Sewer Improvements Redford Road Project Bond Anticipation Notes for the purpose of paying the cost of construction, constructing, and acquiring sanitary sewer system improvements, including sewer line, force main, lift station, and other improvements, together with all necessary appetances thereto.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
You gonna talk about any of these at all or?
I figure maybe we recap at the end is what I thought, I just thought let's get down to before I make comments, get through 19 and then.
Good.
We'll talk about everything that's going on in the county that has to happen between, you know, ones that already have, you know, revenue that will be coming through the sewer notes versus what we have to do in capital improvements.
Understood.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Issuance of not to exceed 1,010,000 Series 2016 Pheasant Run Sewer Project Bond Anticipation Notes for the purpose of paying the cost of project improvements, including engineering, testing, and inspection services, together with all necessary appetances thereto.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Issuance of not to exceed 105,000 Series 2016 County Building Improvement Bond Anticipation Notes for purpose of paying the cost of improving and outfitting a building for county use, including the Veterans Service Commission, together with all necessary appetances thereto.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Issuance of not to exceed 1,515,000 Series 2016 Courthouse Renovation Project Bond Anticipation Notes for the purpose of paying the cost of renovating the county courthouse, including architectural services and all repairs and renovations to the building temporarily housing the adult probation department during such courthouse renovation, together with all necessary appetances thereto.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Issuance of not to exceed 1,010,000 Series 2016 Job and Family Services Capital Improvement Bond Anticipation Notes for purpose of paying the cost of construction, constructing and acquiring improvements to Lorraine County Job and Family Services Building, including HVAC improvements, roof repair and replacement, sidewalk, parking lot, sewer, landscape, security, and all necessary appetances thereto.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Hey, Jim, you wanna have discussion wrapping those up because I don't get to consolidating?
Sure.
Basically, we have a couple of sewer notes here which will be revenue generated based on charges to the residents.
The, why don't we start at the top with number 14? We've been, we've been working on capital improvements now for about two years, a little bit longer, and we're still not quite there, so we're recapitalizing these notes. I will tell you, as we've talked, this is, sooner or later, we gotta pay, pay the bill on these notes. Right now, we're deferring mortgage payments on everything because we're recapitalizing the interest from the notes right back into the new notes, when we go to permanent financing, I stop paying the bill. So that's gonna be a bit of a challenge, but we had to do the work. The Redford Road Sewer, number 15.
Well, before we go on to that.
Sure.
These are capital improvements that normally, we would be able to pay for as we go along, but because of the financial difficulty that we're in, we're having to bond out things that we should be paying for.
In all my years with Lorraine County, we never financed our capital improvements, we always paid for them in cash.
And this isn't even all of what we need to do, I mean, this isn't even taking into consideration our parking garage, that chunks of concrete have fallen on my car, you know, we have crumbling thing, infrastructure that we can't even address because of our issues.
Our, our buildings, we've made them secure so that the taxpayers get life and longevity out of the buildings. We still have a few things, the parking deck has not been addressed, that's, that's correct. I'm waiting for when we do the court work, we're gonna move all of our employees to a temporary location and then move them back because of the PSI building right now, if you haven't seen the back of it, we have concrete flooring off the cantilevers in the back of that building. That'll probably be a question of whether they're gonna demo that building and use the space. But, but our main building, with the exception of the courthouse, which we're getting ready to do, we've, we've maintained the integrity, but it's expensive, they're expensive buildings that require constant updates. And let's not forget that we've been financing sheriff's cars in this barn too. So the last three rounds of vehicles out there are in these, these notes too.
By the time we go to permanent financing, well, they won't even be in service anymore.
Some, some won't. And, and you, there's, there's little you can do about having to provide that equipment and having to move forward with that. There's a lot of things facing us, we were talking about sheriff's car, you know, we're, Coursa is looking at body cameras now, with that, they're from the insurance liability, we may be able to get some funding from them, but let's face facts, we don't really get funding from them, it comes out of our premium payments to Coursa, so that, I love how Coursa does things, they, they take money from us in a premium, then they pretend like they're giving money to somebody to do something, but at the end of the day, we'll be responsible for replacement cost and maintenance cost and contracts on those. I, I thought I saw a couple of weeks ago some, going out for grants for body armor again, and we have a fairly sizable cost that we include in that for body armor. That's just one small aspect of what you're facing, you know, in the future. But the capital improvements included work on the Justice Center, even though the building's new, we've had some, the curtain wall problems that you're well aware of, that we've, we've done, we've done some roofs, and generally speaking, the condition of the buildings, except for the parking deck, are greatly enhanced and will be good for the next 15 or 20 years. I don't know what to tell you about the parking deck, I, I don't think about it because I don't sleep well.
I've given you a couple of suggestions. Sell it to somebody.
You know, the, the, selling it to somebody doesn't increase, doesn't improve the material condition. We sell it to somebody, they will invest in the parking deck and then they will charge people to park there a sufficient fee to recover that. We can do the very same thing. We don't have to sell it to do the same thing. I, you know, I, I, your idea was admirable, but why would we pay more to have somebody do the very thing we should do ourselves?
Never an issue.
Well, I understand. The, I'm not sure that the parking deck is at a point where continued economics into the deck are gonna be sufficient. I will tell you, most likely, my next recommendation is going to be to close the top of the parking deck completely and then add some shoring underneath that. That's, well, I don't think it's gonna be too far away. 430 spots, that's what the parking deck's, pretty sizable garage. So, we're not out of that wood yet, and there's other stuff, but those are the big ones.
We'll have requests coming forward for software for the justice system and.
Well, yeah, I mean.
All kinds of things.
I guess we can talk about, after we get through this, we can talk about what's coming behind it because some of this is just partly.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't stop here and it's not a, it's not a trickle anymore.
Right.
It's cascading.
And the 1.1, or 1.5 million for the courthouse is only a por, a portion of what it's actually gonna be called in.
At the end of the day, we're gonna need, we're going to do some additional enhancements that we discussed. I have, I don't wanna talk about it too much because I haven't, you know, gotten the final return from the courts, they've been pretty busy, but it, it looks like all in with the, if we do the upgrade, install the sprinkler systems and things like that, that'll take the building, you know, another 40 years. We're looking total in about 3.6 million dollars. That's with complete, you know, increasing the size of the parking lots, lots of additional work that, you don't have to do it right now, but somebody later will wish you had and I think we've been in a lot of those wish they did situations ourselves, but I wanna wait until I got, you know, the, the drawings and stuff that we've, I think, have initial agreement on back from the courts, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be an extensive project and let's not forget that we had a lot of relocation cost in that project also because we have to relocate them while we do the building, it's just simply not feasible to try to do any renovating around them, so.
And it saves the old courthouse.
And it saves, well, it has to be saved.
Right.
But, but, so, you're gonna need another 2.5 million in borrowing there, I think the software for the courts is probably gonna be in excess of 2 and 1/2 to 3 million dollars. They, they said it could be higher than that, but I, I think they're working hard to keep the cost down, so we're still looking at another 5 to 6 million dollars easily in potential borrow, borrowing that needs to be taken care of. The Redford Road Sewer, under 15, we're gonna stay in notes for another year or two. Our agreement with the contractor, that, that is going to, we're going to assess it all at the lots when they start building there. In order to get that sewer moving, we enter into the agreements with the developers, but they don't have cash flow initially and so we do the borrowing and it will be a revenue And so we do the borrowing and it will be a revenue bond that will be assessed. But they got to get the project underway to, otherwise we assess the land and there's nothing coming in and they, that stalls the project and it could stall them from completing it. So we're in a good partnership. We've worked with this group on, on a couple of other projects. So we indicated we would stay in notes for two or three years and then go to permanent financing as the lots develop. So that, that money be coming in and we're recapitalizing the interest on that at their cost, not at ours. The, the pheasant run. It's a little shaky.
I read the update, twenty eighteen, we should be ready to go on LaGrange.
There's a lot of factors that have, that are out of our control. There's been some. There's been some things presented that we took as assurances. A little concern with what's going on in LaGrange with their ability to expand the plant and with the EPA and. Quite frankly, this project's going to be a year behind where we thought we would be. It's, again, from factors that are outside of control. We're right on time. The work still has to be done. The residents approached us. There's five hundred and fifty homeowners down there. There's an additional three hundred buildable lots down there. They, they approached us for assistance. We've been trying to help them out. They're on site. Collector's system is in the worst condition of any I've ever seen. I thought Eaton Homes was pretty bad. This one was worse. The bulk of what we're doing is going to be paying just to fix that. They're not under orders and findings simply because the county's working with them on a final resolution. If we weren't there working with them, they would be under orders and findings and fines from, from the EPA. I, I had a conversation with Walco about it, an alternative to the LaGrange, should LaGrange not work out. And we've talked about a flow agreement over, over to Walco, but they're a long way away. We've also had conversation, initial, very brief conversation with Wellington. They may be able to provide another cost effective option to the treatment plan in Wellington. But things haven't gone all its planned and we have a lot of money in the project. The, the least desirable option, and I asked the consultants to look at, would be to rehab the current package plan. And keep it online until we can find a solution. Again, this is alternate one, two, three, four. That's like alternate twenty-two.
Yeah, it's got to be way down the list.
It is, but, but again, we have, I, I am now wanting to have multiple options. In case LaGrange doesn't come through and, and get the ability to expand their plant. Jerry was in those conversations. They were pretty, pretty adamant that they could get that. It hasn't gone that way, has it?
Yeah, there's a few, again, obstacles on LaGrange's end, but. Like I said, we're, we're developing various alternative plans in case worse comes to worse. But we're still optimistic we'll be able to get that through eventually.
The number seventeen, the hundred and five thousand is to complete the veterans project. There was a few outstanding elements. The, the place is beautiful. There was no sense taking, you know, three-legged chairs and cracked, broken desk and stuff. So we, we got some new furnishings. They'll be set for a decade plus over there. So I think it was a great job. We still have the signage we got to do. We put some lipstick on the parking lot. Eventually, we know we got to deal with that parking lot out front, a few things there. So that's that additional money. Number eighteen, job and family services is recoverable. We recover it to indirect lease payments and cost. And I, I got to give Mary Lou and, and Jeff King a nod and Lisa Hobart. We, we, we talked about that the notes paid off, the buildings paid off come this fall. Now, we can either do nothing and the state pays us less for the building and for the folks in there because we're not paying on that note. Or we have the ability, which is necessary because the building was rehabbed twenty years plus ago, to do a real upgrade and freshening of the building and, and they'll pay for that. So that's what we're working on there. That'll keep the integrity of that building and that resource good for another fifteen or twenty years. So they've been working pretty, pretty well on that. The, the, and of course, I think I missed one, the courthouse, I, I did talk about that. We'll, we'll need additional financing. This is just to get us into construction drawings and have availability of funds so that the order can certify some of the work that we need to move forward with. And I think that once, once the, the courts have, have given the agreement, and I'm comfortable that's coming, I think we'll make a presentation. And so that, you know, the public can see what, what the vision is ultimately going to be. I think everybody's going to be very, very pleased. You've seen some initial work yourselves. But I think everybody's going to be very, very pleased in the future. But, but again, it's a historic building. The work is going to cost more because of the building itself.
Which wasn't, something that wasn't anticipated anyway, so.
Commissioner, you probably would have had to do close to a million dollars worth of work eventually on the building.
To keep it closed.
To keep it closed.
Yeah, right.
And the parking situation, let's face fact, it's, it's been horrendous over on that side of the courthouse. We're hopeful that we're entering, we're working on a comprehensive MOU with the city of Elyria. To finally clarify that parking, you know, they own part of it because it's on the right of way of the street. We own part of it. I, I'm, I'm hopeful and, and I'm optimistic that the city of Elyria is going to allow us to redo all of that parking and control that parking over there. It's a nightmare now. You, you can't walk through there without falling over a curb or getting banged into car mirrors and. It's never been, it's never been very well. And as you know, when you first took office, we had money to, to fix a lot of that stuff. And, and things didn't go as well as planned and it never, the work never got done. And it's going to be done now. And also, the streetscape on Third Street. Elyria will be taking out that turning lane on Third and moving the sidewalks further out. Where, we're working with them and, and, and I believe that they have already initially agreed, but I want to get it firmed up and generalized. To widen that sidewalk along Third because if the white sidewalks along the Justice Center, we have them along the county admin building. But you had that very old, narrow sidewalk along Third Street. Part of the issue, we were going to replace and do all that, is what we've been working with Elyria because that would all have to come out. Because they're moving, they're moving that turning lane, they're taking that turning lane off of Third Street out of there. So we, that slowed us a little bit. We're getting all those cooperations. We just don't want to do any work to come back and find that going to either be torn out or. Or it's going to be different. And, and also, we're talking about making sure that the, the lighting down the whole street is the same. Right now, we have three different lighting schemes going on. Some of it's ours, some of it's Elyria's, some of it's on the Elyria grid they pay for, some of it's on our grid that we pay for. So we're working out those details too. And of course, there's two memorials at the courthouse that, that we're, we're going to enhance. I don't think people realize that, that, I think it's a World War Two or World War One memorial on the, is it the west side?
The west side.
The west side and then the workers.
The workers memorial on the east side.
You know, so we're going to do a lot to, to enhance them, make them more respectable and, and, and responsible. Because right now, they're just really under a tree in the woods.
Right. Great.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Consolidate the six bond anticipation notes issued of the county of Lorraine into a consolidated bond anticipation note issued and establishing terms of such consolidated issue.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
And it's these six ones above, so.
The, I will tell you.
They're all paid for by different revenue streams, though. That's not an issue.
Excuse me?
No.
I didn't, I, I didn't hear the question.
No, I said, they're, they all, they all have different revenue streams, so to put them in one bond, it doesn't.
Well, sometimes we put things into a jumbo bond because the cost of issue was left and then Lisa will account for them separately how they're paid. I don't really like mixing revenue bonds with GEO bonds. The Joseph wasn't talking about mixing the revenue with the GEO, right? Redford's going to stay in notes for quite a while.
Right. And this is just consolidating it for the purpose of.
Timing, right? Right. See, it, it's a lot easier for us. We don't have to do this four or five times a year. Now, we're going to do a rating presentation. The week after, the second week of June.
Yeah.
I'm not really. I don't know how it's going to go. You know, the last couple of years, I've been surprised. We've been able to work very closely with the rating agencies and maintain the ratings. I, I just don't see it happening this time. I should prep you now for that. I, I really see it, at the very best. Probably a, a negative outlook or possibly a downgrade. We're just not doing, we don't have to carry over the expenses or exceeding revenues. We're, we're issuing a lot of debt for things that they're not going to be happy that we're issuing debt for because you're mortgaging in the future. So I'll let you know. It's, but the, the, the impact of, you know, a negative rating also costs us more money to borrow money. So we'll work on it and we'll let you know how it goes.
Mr. Lundey?
When I got here, you know, I was made very much aware of how dark our financial future was. And, and I say it all the time, it's, it becomes, it's much darker than I thought it was and it becomes darker each day. And, you know, that's.
Can, can I say something to that commissioner? I, I never really think I, it needs to be said. This isn't, this isn't because of bad governance.
Right.
The roof doesn't wear out because of bad governance. The, you know, the building doesn't need a renovation because you did something. These are costs that everybody experiences. And, and you have hundreds of thousands of square feet on the roof, thousands of employees. You have responsibilities and it's not your fault that these things have to be paid for, but paid for nonetheless. And never mind all your mandated services that you're ordered to provide.
Right.
So I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's something that, you know, I think we always have to educate the public about is government infrastructure. You know, whether it's, I know with the city, you know, I used to tell folks when I worked for the city of Elyria, if you only knew how old the pipes were in the ground. You'd be very alarmed by that. There's a reason why, you know, cities like Flint and others are having problems with drinking water and all those issues. I mean, you know, infrastructure can only be in place for so long before it needs to be upgraded and replaced. And, you know, it all comes down to how people manage their homes too. We, we all know, we've got the neighbors in our neighborhood who, they don't put a single dime back into their house and it certainly shows. And, you know, we have a responsibility to make sure these properties are managed and managed well. And, you know, even investing in the courthouse, I think, is a good example of how we're trying to use an existing building. Give it a true government purpose, not just so that it sits there for people to look at for historic purposes, but it actually has a government function. Plus, it's a big part of our history. So these are the investments we have to, you know, to make along the way. And, and it's just the reality of, if you own a home, you got to fix the roof, fix the plumbing and fix the windows and, and all those things. But they, they don't go away. And that's why I'm sometimes surprised when people talk about, you know, it's always government spending. Well, it's, it's trying to protect your assets and, you know, trying to make sure that we manage your house well, your government house well. So that we can continue to keep it functioning because going out and building all kinds of things new certainly can cost a boatload of money.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Approve MOU with Amherst Main Street for administration of the FY fifteen CDBG set aside downtown revitalization grant in the amount of eighteen thousand to be paid from the contract services account.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Award agreement with Pogomire Design Group with the amount of five thousand for technical support for the FY fifteen CDBG set aside downtown revitalization. Grant to be paid from consultant services account.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Under job and family authorized payment of county general fund mandated shares outlined in compliance with the high revised code fifty-one oh one sixteen. NOAC fifty-one oh one nine six thirty-one in the amount of one million fifty-one thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars for state fiscal year seventeen.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
I think that went up a little bit from last year, didn't it, in our mandated share for.
I think it's a lot.
Seventy-four or something?
Yeah, it's, it's been pretty steady, but it goes up thirty, goes down thirty. I didn't really look at the numbers.
First, our first year here was like one point five million. And so it's been fluctuating, actually down, thank God, but like everything else going up. But a little bit up from last year.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Under the sheriff, twenty-four, we are going to hold that till next week, correct?
Yes.
Entering a renewal agreement with the Ironmark.
Right, there was some, some dates that needed to be corrected in that agreement.
Number twenty-five, authorized sheriff to apply for bulletproof vest partnership grant in the amount of twenty-two thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and sixteen cents. Requires fifty percent match of forty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-six cents to be paid from their capital and equipment account. And then authorized payment of three vests purchased by adult probation if paid in the amount of two thousand twenty-four dollars ninety-six, ninety-seven cents paid from their equipment account.
So move.
Second, but a question. As I read through this, our numbers, because I didn't have the final paperwork, it says it's, it's a grant in the amount of twenty-two thousand. And requires a fifty percent match of forty-three thousand. Which is, should it say, which is a fifty percent match of the forty-three thousand?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure we had to clarify for the auditors' purposes, which, you know, is the fifty percent of the match.
Twenty-two thousand.
Right, that's what we're appropriating, not the forty-three.
What is the cost of one, one life, right? I mean, these, these are important things.
Oh, without a doubt. It just, I wanted to have the language right, not have an issue going through for payment. That's all right, Jerry, right? Okay, thank you.
The.
Believe it or not, these vests only have like a life of like five years, so they.
The maximum allowable funding for this bulletproof vest program is twenty-two thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and sixteen cents. That's what we're getting in grant matching, in grant funds. The total, the total cost of sixty-seven vests, which includes the three for adult probation, is forty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. So the sheriff would be responsible for forty-three thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and twenty, thirty-six cents and adult probation, two thousand twenty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Is the, is the bulletproof, does the sheriff actually have the funding in his account for that? Because I, I know in some years, we.
Nope.
I didn't think so.
Come on, that's why I wanted to question on this. Let's say didn't. Okay, we're getting a grant for twenty-two thousand, correct? The total purchase of the vests are forty-three thousand, plus two thousand. That's forty-five thousand. So that means there's twenty-three thousand coming from the sheriff's budget.
I don't think there's anything coming from.
Well, I mean, I think that's the intent of filing for the grant. The total purchase, he's forty-five grand in, right? It's not a sixty-seven thousand dollar contract.
Correct, yeah. No, the total cost would be forty-five, twenty-two, so twenty-two whatever.
So, great, twenty-three thousand then from the sheriff's department and adult probation. Go ahead, Lisa, sorry, I just wanted clarification on that.
At the budget hearings last year, if you remember, the sheriff alluded to the fact of needing these bulletproof vests. So as a board, you decided, we did set aside forty thousand dollars within the two thousand sixteen budget to cover for this. But adult probation will be paying for their own.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think that, that the money was in his budget for this. I, I, that's why I wonder.
We set money aside.
Yeah, we set it aside.
Yeah, the, the, so that'll be coming out of equipment, our equipment.
Our capital equipment.
Our capital account. And of course, you know, as we, as we know with adult probation, that's general fund money anyway. So it's whether it comes there or the other way. It's still a general fund obligation. But, but it's, I remember when the, when the deputies weren't wearing body armor until the mid, mid to late nineties and, you know, so it's. And you're right, five years. We, we need to talk about that, Commissioner Kokoski. My understanding is from the sweat and, and the wear and tear on them, it degrades the, the material in the, in the vest and.
Well, it's a good way for them to keep getting in, income or revenue.
Well, you know, the, well, the warranty runs out. Now, I don't want to be the person wearing, you know.
A vest without warranty.
Have a warranty to work. Quite frankly, it's, it's just one of those things.
So also, just so you're aware, so when this starts moving forward, a transfer will be going through to get the money in place and everything, just so you're aware of that when you see it.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez.
I don't have any further comments, just wanted to thank you.
Mr. Anis.
I have one update regarding a matter of pending litigation.
Commissioner's report.
Actually, I had a pretty busy week this week. This past Thursday, I did the welcome for the EPA over at the Transportation Center. It was put on by our solid waste department. It was OCAP, Office for Compliance Assistance and Pollution Prevention. OCAP, not to be confused with oh crap, because usually when you talk about the EPA, it's usually a negative thing. But actually, this part of the EPA is, is there for businesses and they help them to get into compliance and also have some low interest rate. Revolving loan funds, which is one point two five percent below market and also some principal forgiveness in some cases. So it's kind of like grant money without saying grant money. They also have wastewater treatment assistance and it's a free service. They'll send a couple of guys out that are very knowledgeable about water treatment plants. And they will look at the policies and procedures and make recommendations to help the plant operations. And they'll stay there for as many days as they need and it's free of charge to these businesses. And I asked Don Romancic to check with Don Keller from Team Lorraine County and also Virginia Haynes from the Community Alliance to see if maybe. We could have the EPA come in and talk to those organizations to let people know what they have available there. So it's a lot, it was a lot of good information. Part of the EPA that we don't usually hear about or, or talk to these people, so. And then Thursday afternoon, I attended the Valor Home meeting that they had. They're currently housing twenty-six veterans that would otherwise be homeless. They are in need of donations, both for the veterans and the facility, and they're located at two-two-one West Twenty-first Street. One of the things that they do need is a, a roof replacement on the building. So I contacted Home Depot to talk to them, because I know they work with veterans and veterans groups a lot. And I asked them if possibly they would be willing or interested in either donating supplies and/or labor to do the roof. So I'm going to ask the commissioners if it would be okay. They, they need something, a request on letterhead from us. So I'm going to have maybe Tony's write up a letter to Home Depot requesting that and then we could all sign it and send it over.
Sure.
I think it'd be great. Yeah. So they have two events coming up. One's May twenty-ninth at two o'clock at the Palace and I don't really know what that one was. I, I missed that. But they also, on September eleventh, are going to be. But they also, on September 11th, are going to be having their event again down at Black River Landing. And they're looking for entities to have a, a table or a booth down there to pass out information. I believe they're going to charge maybe forty dollars for a table to, to do that. Then on Friday.
Commissioner, can I, I believe the Palace event is a showing of the movie that Jacqueline Bradley did about her uncle, John Rosano.
Oh, okay.
The veteran that never made it back.
The what?
The veteran who never made it back. It was a, they did a large event on it a month ago or so, that was in Lorraine.
Oh, good, okay.
But that's the event at the Palace that day.
All right, good. Friday, I attended a planting event over at the Turnpike Plaza in Amherst. It's actually called the Vermillion Valley Plaza, which I didn't know that. I actually worked there back in eighty-two. It was Howard Johnson's Turnpike Plaza back then, and I made a whopping four dollars an hour. But anyways, Randy Cole and his toddler son Porter, who is cute as a button, did the opening remarks. And he is the executive director of the Turnpike and Information Infrastructure Commission. Mike Minett, from the executive director of Keep Ohio Beautiful, also spoke. And then remarks from Ken Christensen, a senior biologist representing David Trees, talking about the Ohio native plants that are going to help with pollination for bees, butterflies, and birds. JVS students came out there and did the plannings. I also went to JVS, I let them, that, know that I was at JVS, working at Howard Johnson's Turnpike Plaza back then. So they, they did both sides, both sides of the Turnpike Plazas, these planting events. Let's see, what, oh, and then at one o'clock, I had my OPWC meeting, which I was re-elected to the Enrec, probably because nobody else wanted it. So that was Friday. Saturday was Pride Day, we had a lot of events all over Lorraine County, but I was Uber Mom. I took, I was a transportation for my son to be able to participate in the Pride Day event. And then I want to thank Dr. Pareek, he invited me to his home for a fundraiser for Ted Strickland, and it was, it was a lovely event. And it was all the Indian and Asian Americans in our community, a lot of doctors and, you know, really nice people, very concerned about our community. And I just want to thank him for inviting me to that. And then Sunday, Thido's and Love Astray had a fundraiser at Wooden Wine, and it was, it was really good. I'm sure they, they did well on raising money for our four-legged friends so they can stay healthy, be spayed and neutered, and find good and loving homes. And then Tuesday, Mayor Hunter had his yearly breakfast over at Quaker Steak and Lube to talk about all the good things happening in Sheffield Village. And then yesterday after, or yesterday morning, the three of us attended Guthrie Ditch viewing over in Pittsfield Township. And it seemed like everybody there was in favor of what we were looking to do there, and actually, a guy asked, asking us to extend what we were doing there. So if we have any additional funds, hopefully we'll be able to take that into consideration, so. That's it, end of my report.
Great. Yeah, busy week for all of us, I think, everywhere.
Yeah.
Last Wednesday after Commissioners meeting, I left for Indianapolis. I was attending a Transportation and Leadership Academy conference, which is funded by the Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, and Transportation for America. Nowaka, our five-county region metropolitan planning organization, along with Seattle's MPO, Seattle area, Des Moines, Iowa, South Bend, Indiana, Indianapolis, Boston, and Lee County, Florida, got together. We were discussing performance metrics in regards to funding and maintaining and deciding which projects to move forward, especially in regards to the new fast-track legislation that came out, which is the new federal funding formula for highways, which is boring to a lot of people, but that's what we do as commissioners, roads and bridges and ditches, I guess. And explaining the new processes regards to fast-track lining up with MAP 21. Had some great speakers, Federal Highway Administration spoke. They're really dynamic young guys. Name was Nick Donahue, and he was from the Commonwealth of Virginia. Young guy brought in to put together their planning for the entire state and how they turned it around. They took the entire political process out of it, because there was a lot of fights between, you know, Northern Virginia and then those closest to DC and where all the money went to. And the feds had nothing but praise for the way they did. I love to bring a guy like that here, maybe he could talk to RO dot people.
Yeah.
But they did a really fair process. We did a lot of exercises on how we're going to figure our metrics, type of payment, length of time, payment lasting, I mean, comparisons to Europe where they put a road in and it lasts a hundred years, where we put a road in and we repaved it in five or six.
Yeah, right.
So I mean, extremely great learning experience, had a great stake while I was down there, too.
Okay.
But it was nice to talk to everybody across the country. We will be meeting in Boston in October to follow up. We're doing monthly webinars through the entire, since it started a couple months ago, just hoping we can get forward on a moving process and how it should be done nationally and get on some same rules for people, which would make it easier for the federal government than to fund us. Also, Team Lorraine County Executive Meeting met Wednesday, Tuesday morning, together, planning for our meeting in June for the full board. I spoke about lead coalready. We also have Lorraine County Solar Co-op. We had a presentation here a couple of weeks ago. They, residents have until June 15th to join if they're interested in doing solar. Questions to them at solarteam@ohsun.org. Again, talking about renewables. Oil's not going to continue to be 250 or 260 a gallon. It's probably gone up a buck a gallon in the past month and a half. So if anyone's interested, I think that's the end of the report. Thank you.
Always goes up during Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it's been climbing rapidly there. Would like to commend all those who were involved in organizing the Avon Memorial Tribute. At that tribute, individuals who were killed when on active military duty were recognized and remembered. Corporal David Schneider, Sergeant Patrick Smith, and also Air Force Captain John Burelka. All three of them were recognized at that event. My understanding is there are special plaques that will be put in place at Avon High School for Corporal David Schneider and for John Burelka. And then at Clearview, they'll have a special plaque put in place for Sergeant Patrick Smith. The township trustees held their monthly meeting, and that took place over the Elyria Township. They had a spokesperson from the AG's office. And just can't caution folks enough about any crazy emails that you get, any phone calls that you get soliciting any kind of credit card information, bank account information. Sometimes they'll contact you indicating that, you know, somebody in your family or grandchild was, you know, overseas somewhere and needs money and those things. And so you should have pretty good understanding where people are at the time and know whether those are legitimate calls, but just do not be giving out a bank account information or, or supposedly wiring money to people. And they have become very creative, very convincing in the way that they orchestrate their scams. Also, congratulations to the Lorraine NAACP for the annual membership luncheon. I was unable to attend, but understood that one pretty well. They also do a hat presentation where the ladies model different hats there. And so I told them I would show up wearing an Indians cap one year, so that would be my hat presentation. Thank you to all who participate in Pride Day and helping to clean up the county. And the Mayor's Business Council Breakfast, always a nice event each year over there at Sheffield Village. Lots of things going on in the village, all kinds of new businesses coming in and road improvements being made over there as that community continues to grow. And then last night, had the opportunity to join others for the Lorraine County General Health District Advisory Council. Last night was the, the big vote on, on the merger, bringing in Avon Lake, Elyria, and Lorraine. And this is, you know, an example of the direction that a lot of us in government are going, trying to find ways to do things more efficiently and effectively. And, and there's no question that it'd become just not cost-effective for these communities to continue to operate their own health departments. So I think the merger will help out in the long run, and like to commend the director there, Dave Cavell, and others for their hard work. And because it was not an easy initiative to bring forward and to bring everybody together, but we had the vote last night, the vote was fourteen to three to accept the merger, and so we moved forward from there. That completes my report.
For correspondence?
Can I hold you up for one second? Commissioner, I, you received an email from Andy at the jail about the Aramark contract.
Yeah, that was the one that we held off.
You held off?
For the following week. Because there was some discrepancies about the dates in there. I had raised a question, just wondering about the reopener clause, but that's tied into a, a food market scale that takes place every single year, as to whether food costs are going up and, and they're allowed to, to make some adjustments. But there were some discrepancies on the dates in the contract.
I just saw the, copied the email, so I just, okay, great.
Right. So we decided to hold that for yet another week. I would move to approve the board correspondence and waive the reading.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Mr. Calhoun.
Hi.
Ms. Kowski.
Hi.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to comment this morning during public comment? Okay. Seeing no takers, I would move that we go into executive session, discuss personnel issues that were outlined by the county administrator and legal issues outlined by the assistant prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Mr. Calhoun.
Hi.
Ms. Kowski. Hi.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.